All right, everyone ready? We'll call the meeting to order at 6:02. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call when you get a chance, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Council Member Bagby. I assume she was at closed session, so if she comes in late, I'll note it for the record.
Thank you. On closed session, we have nothing to report out. Any conflict of interest declarations tonight? Seeing none. Any changes or deletions to the agenda, David?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving into B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in our audience that would like to make a public comment? Please, sir, come forward.
So first of all, I'd like to thank Hector Galvin and his team in the Parks and Recreation Department for their great job in keeping city facilities, both the new ones and the existing ones, in great shape. Having a new golden retriever now for about seven months, it's been great using the dog park and having all those bags available to parks for when he does his little business. But with all of the extra and ongoing maintenance required, I suspect, I'd like the City Council to consider adding additional funding from the surplus budget bucket to Hector's department, unless, of course, the surplus is returned to residents in the form of a tax reduction. And with taxes on our minds, bond measures are nothing more than increasing tax load on property owners. Bonds are funded by property owners through their yearly tax bills, as you all know, and I'm sure you all pay them, proving that the close call on Prop 1 hasn't satisfied the state and federal politicians' appetite for more debt. An Oakland Assemblywoman has introduced Assembly Bill 1657, which proposes another $10 billion bond fund to existing housing programs, including those funding rental and support of developments, among other things. But this Assemblywoman's bond demand isn't the only bond proposal bouncing around Sacramento. New debt totaling additional billions is being proposed for campus modernization, climate change, and drug addiction. All of these new bond costs will further burden homeowners and likely appear on the November ballot. So we've got local bonds, we've got state bonds, buns, bonds, and now property owners are being asked to approve a regional bond to pay for someone else's housing, another transfer of a homeowner's wealth to house someone else somewhere in the state. I'm very curious tonight to hear about how another $20 billion bond fund can effectively be spent when an auditor's report said there continues to be rampant waste in spending these bond funds. Today's regional bond proposal seeks to add almost $200 annually to a Cloverdale Home Properties bill. I'd say stop these bonds for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Is there anyone else in our audience that would like to make a public comment? Great. Seeing none. We have no written communications. We will move on to the student liaison report. Yada, welcome back.
Thank you. So last week on the third, the high school hosted their 25th community unity, in which community unity is when juniors and seniors get put into different groups with teachers and they get assigned somewhere around town to do something. In these three weeks, certain students will be taking their AP exam, like the AP Stats, Environmental Science, Spanish Culture, or the Biology test. This Friday, the seniors will be having their senior trip in which they will be going to the San Francisco Bay Crows. Lastly, on the 17th, two classes will be going to the San Francisco Zoo to learn about the dangers to their habitats. For the Washington, there isn't any information about any events going on, unfortunately. And then Jefferson today had a ribbon-cutting celebration because through a grant, they were able to get a book vending machine. Also this morning, it was their last walk and roll for the school year, and on the 13th, there would be a school-side council at 2:30 p.m. Last thing is this week, it's teacher appreciation, in which students can write something about how they appreciate their teachers.
Thank you. Good job. And is this your last council that you're going to be at, or do we have one more?
When do you graduate? I mean, when's the end of the school year?
June 7th.
June 6th.
6th.
Because 7 is when their seniors graduate, or the eighth graders promote?
So yeah, one more meeting. Awesome. While I have a mic, really quickly, on the student liaison report, I did want to mention, any students out there listening, we really want to have you take our recreation survey. So if you know any students that are interested, it's cloverdale.net/recksurvey. We're very interested in what the youth of Cloverdale is interested in as far as potential future rec programming down the line. So I'll shoot that over to you, but it's going to be going out to all the schools pretty soon.
Thank you, Michael. All right, moving on to E, Proclamations. E1, Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Our recipient tonight is Mike Maloney.
The proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale declaring May 5th, May 5th through May 11, 2024, is Professional Municipal Clerks Week, whereas May 5th through May 11, 2024, will be the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world and serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the earliest established public service and provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and other government agencies, whereas municipal clerks continually endeavor to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational program seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and endorsed by all of its members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries, Municipal Clerks Week is a time of celebration reflection and reflection on the importance of the city clerk's office. Whereas in Cloverdale, the city clerk strives to preserve the public trust in government by ensuring the city's legislative processes are transparent, accurate, and timely. Safeguards, the legislative history of the city, serves as a custodian of city records and administers the citywide records management program, provides meeting administration, and serves as the city's filing officer, and is the local compliance officer for federal, state, and local statutes, including the Political Reform Act, the Brown Act, and Public Records Act, and is a local elections official. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Cloverdale declare the week of May 5th through May 11, 2024, as Municipal Clerks Week in Cloverdale, and further extend our appreciation to our municipal city clerk, Mike Maloney, and to all the municipal clerks past, present, and future for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the Cloverdale community.
Hi. Thank you. So you want to say something?
I do. Yeah, last year I said something. I thought I'd, I put it on post-it notes last year, so I actually printed it up this year. I thought I'd read through something really quickly. I saw a meme on LinkedIn for Professional Municipal Clerk Week, and it stated, "City clerks, nobody knows what I do until I stop doing it." And it made me laugh, but like most administrative professionals, clerks work primarily in the background, at least when I'm not up here taking minutes and troubleshooting our tech. But though we're behind the scenes, the work is essential to the organization. As the proclamation said, the role of the city clerk is to preserve the public's trust in government by ensuring the legislative process is transparent, accurate, and timely, safeguarding the legislative history, administering open elections, so on and so forth. I'll skip ahead a little bit. Basically, I feel I'm the liaison between the public and council, and I support both. And my personal goal is to guide and encourage open participation in the decision and policymaking process. Also, as our, as you know from last week, or last meeting, our public information officer, I'm also responsible for managing and executing various aspects of the city's marketing and outreach efforts and strategies to help educate, inform, engage, and interact with the community, promote participation, highlight achievements, create digital content, and manage our website and social medias. So to some metrics, really quickly, in the past two years, adding it in my time here, I've processed 188 resolutions, nine ordinances, 126 PRAs, 55 proclamations, and certificates of appreciation, and built and published 141 agendas in their corresponding minutes. I've also completed significant web edits, various process improvements, and much more. I've also been diligently working on obtaining the prestigious Certified Municipal Clerk designation. To do so, in addition to pertinent experience, as time served, a municipal clerk must attend extensive job-specific education programs. And over the past two years, I've completed over 73 units, most of which were at minimum two hours each. I debated listing each class for you, but we'd be here a very long time, but also losing my voice, so I'm not going to go through all that. So what I do want to take this opportunity to say is to inform the council that I will be submitting my certification application tomorrow to the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and after their review will hopefully require the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk. It's taken me a very long time, and I finished my last class today. Additionally, after next week, I will have completed my 10th Athenian Dialogue, which is where I read a pre-assigned book, devote a full day discussing the text with clerks from across the country, and then complete an extensive essay assessment for each. Once this last one's completed, I'll be eligible to be inducted into the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Athenian Leadership Society as a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow. I know that's a lot of jargon, but ultimately, I just wanted to toot my own horn a little bit, because it's the week that I get to do that, and I'm proud of both accomplishments. And I'm really proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of every city clerk before me over those 55 years and prior. I'm proud to be a city clerk, and I'm even prouder to be the city clerk of Cloverdale. I appreciate the recognition from council, both last meeting, when you considered and approved amending my employment agreement, and tonight as part of Professional Municipal Clerks Week. So thank you again, and I look forward to serving the city and the public as a city clerk of Cloverdale for years to come. Sorry I had to read that. I wrote that.
That's great. Anything? Anyone want to say something?
Said it last week.
No?
The meme that you don't notice what clerks do until they're not doing it is exactly, is absolutely true. Just this week, Michael found my AB 1234 training, which I knew I had taken in 2023, and I needed to get it out to some of the other clerks on the other boards that I serve with, and sure enough, he dug that thing up and we found it, and I don't have to get recertified until 2025. So that's exactly the kind of, you know, way, that's one of the ways that he supports council members and is just so organized and, you know, keeps that data from getting lost. It's one of the small things that you do that I appreciate so much, but also just taking the long view where our operations and our technical infrastructure, that you really have an eye for the long view as well. And that's just, we need somebody keeping an eye on that on a regular basis. We're a small team. We run a very tight team, and that's just not something that the city manager, assistant city manager, you know, need to be spending their important attention on. And you just fill in so many of the cracks and do the small things, but you're also really looking to make us a more efficient and better-run organization, and I just really appreciate that about you and just, and I think that that's maybe one of the most important characteristics of any clerk I've ever worked with, and that is flexibility and variability, and just being able to pick up on what's needed and get it done. So we really appreciate that about you, Mike, and I'm just so glad you're on the team.
Thank you. I know most of you guys said a lot of nice things last week.
Nice job, Mike. Thanks for when I come in there.
You don't need two meetings dedicated to me.
I just want to thank you for when I come in there, you help me out getting all the little things handled, so yeah, it's a pleasure to come in and talk to you, so thank you.
To say you've hit the ground running here is not enough. You're like a drag car off the start line, so we thank you for everything you're doing, proud of you for getting your classes done, and good luck on that test. You're going to kill it and get your certification. I look forward to seeing it. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Picture? Picture? Picture?
We did a funny one last year. I think we've got to do both again.
Funny one? What?
Do both.
Come on, Yada, you got to get in the picture.
I told you, you're doing everything.
Proclamation number two, E2, Lyme and Tick-Borne Diseases Awareness Month, and our recipient is Emily Handelman.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale recognizing May 2024 as Lyme and Tick-Borne Diseases Awareness Month in Cloverdale, whereas Lyme disease is the fastest-growing vector-borne disease in the United States caused by the bacterium Borrelia verdorphae and is transmitted by the common black-legged tick found in nearly one half of all U.S. counties, and whereas ticks that carry Lyme disease can also carry at least 15 other pathogens, many of them transmitted within minutes of being bitten, with one painless tick bite frequently resulting in multiple infections, including bacteria, parasites, viruses, and whereas the risk of contracting Lyme disease can be year-round, the nymphal ticks, which are the size of a poppy seed, are most active in the spring. Tick bites are nearly painless, with fewer than 50% of patients with Lyme disease able to recall a tick bite, and fewer than 50% reporting a bull's-eye rash. And whereas Lyme disease infects more than 300,000 people annually in the United States, yet testing for Lyme disease remains only 50% accurate, with the average patient going two or more years before getting a proper diagnosis. And whereas Lyme disease is an underreported illness, therefore, the actual number of people with Lyme disease in Cloverdale is likely 10 times the reported number of cases, and whereas Lyme disease is a complex, multi-system illness, which if caught early can be treated, but if left untreated can invade the nervous system, heart, and multiple organs of the body, causing years of pain, suffering severe disability, and even death. Where children are at the highest risk for contracting Lyme disease is the responsibility of every community to educate the public about the signs, symptoms, treatment, and how to prevent Lyme disease, whereas the best protection against Lyme, against tick-borne diseases are prevention, education, and early treatment. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Lance, do hereby proclaim May 2024 Lyme Disease Awareness Month in Cloverdale dated May 8, 2024, so ordered by Todd Lance, Mayor.
Thank you. Emily, would you like to say something?
All right. I'm happy to see you have a giant sculpture of a spirochete right at the end of the block. And that's what Borrelia is. It's a spirochete. On behalf of the Lyme disease community, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the City of Cloverdale for officially declaring May as Lyme and Tick-Borne Diseases Awareness Month. With the beautiful weather here now is the perfect time to enjoy gardens, sports, our favorite hiking trails. You may find yourself hiking with kids and dogs or sitting down for a picnic in the shade of an oak tree. However, it is important to remember that this shade is also enjoyed by very tiny ticks, which can carry Lyme disease and other serious infections, such as tuberculosis and bartonulosis. I wish I had been aware of this back in 2001, but at the time, it was the furthest thing from my mind. Like many others, it took years before I was properly tested and diagnosed. You may not notice a tick, you certainly won't hear one approaching. A bite may not itch, sting, or swell, or cause a visible rash, but if you develop any unusual symptoms, such as pain, insomnia, memory loss, nausea, heart palpitations, or fatigue, do your research. Stay healthy, be tick-aware, and enjoy the outdoors. Thank you again, Cloverdale.
Thank you so much. Councilmore, insert?
The one thing I wanted to say about Lyme disease is most people don't understand it until it happens to them, and prevention is key.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you for coming. Yes, absolutely. And can we take a photo with you? F1, Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, or the BAFA, and 2024 Regional Affordable Housing Bond.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're scheduled to receive a presentation by Michelle Whitman. Michelle Whitman is joining us as the Director of the Sonoma County Community Development Commission. Welcome, Michelle. Tonight, she's going to walk us through a presentation on the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority. This, you will hear the acronym BAFA, as well as an overview of the 2024 Regional Affordable Housing Bond. Part of the mission of the Sonoma County Community Development Commission is to serve as Sonoma County's regional housing agency, and we do a lot of coordination, particularly with regard to our community development block grants, home funds, as well as other affordable housing programs. They manage our Section 8 housing. Just a little bit of background for this item, the BAFA was created by statute, by the San Francisco Bay Area Regional Housing Finance Act in 2019, and the purpose is to raise, administer, and allocate funding for what you'll often hear is the term, the three Ps. And what the three Ps refer to is production, meaning production of new affordable housing, preservation of existing housing. Often, we encounter former redevelopment, our houses that were provided funding assistance by redevelopment agencies that may become unaffordable, so one of the mechanisms is to try to fund keeping those houses affordable to appropriately qualified families, and last but not least, protection. And that's kind of more geared towards rental protections, keeping people from becoming homeless by, you know, providing rental subsidies and other mechanisms. So right now, the BAFA Board, along with the Board of Directors, Executive Board of the Association of Area Governments, is working on a possible general obligation bond for the November 2024 ballot of either $10 or $20 billion. And I think Michelle will walk us through a little bit of that with her presentation. So Michelle, I'd like to invite you up to the speaker dials, and our city clerk is here to walk through the slide presentation as necessary. I want to add, if you haven't already, if you refresh Granicus, there was an agenda report that accompanied the presentation, and that should be available to you. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, if you want to offer any, can we?
Thank you for being here, Michelle. I'm looking forward to this, so the mic's yours.
Yeah, it's my pleasure to be here. Thank you, Mayor Lance, council members, city manager, for the great introduction. You've cut the time that I'm going to need on my presentation because you did such a great overview. I want to acknowledge Kevin Thompson, who sits on the Community Development Commission's Cities and Towns Advisory Committee. I really appreciate your input on that committee. In addition to being the executive director of the Sonoma County Community Development Commission, I'm also on the advisory committee for BAFA itself, and it's been a real pleasure to participate in the process of shaping what this regional bond might look like. So if we can go to the next slide. To get us started, I want to talk about, I want to just give us a snapshot of what the bond is, and the city manager did cover some of this. It will be somewhere between $10 and $20 billion to build and preserve affordable housing across the nine Bay Area county region. Currently, it's estimated, I'm going to talk regionally about some of our housing numbers, and then we'll drill down to Cloverdale as we work our way through the presentation. So currently, it's estimated that about 71,000 affordable homes would be built and could be built if no new funding is identified for affordable housing. But with a $20 billion bond, we'll talk about the upper limit here, we could build more than double that, building and preserving 72,000 additional affordable homes throughout the nine county region. It requires voter approval. Currently, it would require a two-thirds threshold to be approved. There is a constitutional amendment that's being proposed that might bring that threshold down. The funds would likely be dispersed over a period of about 10 years, and the funds can be spent on eligible uses that have already been identified in the enabling legislation. So the eligible uses were, are basically the three Ps, preservation, protection, and production. Next slide, please. So let's talk about why there, why we need a bond. Why is it even being contemplated? We can go to the next slide. Thank you. The Bay Area faces an affordable housing shortage fueled by 50 years of restricted land use planning that has suppressed multifamily, primarily multifamily construction, and made building more difficult and expensive. The impact on affordable housing needs is severe. Between 2015 and 2021, cities and counties across the Bay Area permitted only 35% of the affordable homes needed. The consequences of the lack of affordable housing continues to harm our region. 37,000 Bay Area residents are homeless as of 2021. 1.5 million people, or 23% of renters, spend more than half of their income on rent. We see overcrowding and unsafe housing conditions far from where people work generally, and vital employees and community members are leaving the region. Next slide, please. So the bond is innovative in that it supports new approaches to affordable housing. Next slide. The BAFA bond is being proposed. The BAFSA bond is being proposed as the first regional, or BAFSA itself is the first regional housing finance authority in the state. BAFSA was created by the California Legislature in 2019 in recognition that the Bay Area needed a new approach to address its housing challenges. The agency was founded to address problems in the affordable housing market, from raising funds on a bigger scale to improving the efficiency and speed of building new affordable homes. BAFSA works closely with local governments and is governed by elected officials through the BAFSA Board and Association of Bay Area Governments, or ABAG, Executive Board. One of the core powers of BAFSA is to raise region-wide funding through ballot measures. Next slide, please. Bond funds would be spent according to the legislation that provides that BAFSA include up to, and we're talking about regional numbers still, up to $16 billion, or 80% of funds returned to cities and counties of origin based on how much their property owners contribute to the bond. That is, according to assessed property values. Four cities, San Jose, Oakland, Santa Rosa, and Napa, receive their own allocation based on either their size or the amount of affordable housing required by RENA. BAFSA retains the remaining $4 billion, or 20% of the funds raised for distribution in the region. Investment goals for BAFSA are to advance more innovative, cost-effective investments, and to become a regional lending agency able to reinvest funds it earns back into housing as project subsidies and community benefits. Next slide. By approaching the problem regionally, every county will receive the substantial benefits it needs to build affordable housing. And so here, we see what each county would receive based on current, the current tax roll. And for Sonoma County, we've got both the level at $20 billion bond and at a $10 billion bond. Santa Rosa, by the way, gets its own allocation, and that's because it has more than 30% of the RENA obligation for low-income households. Next slide, please. Here, we are estimating proceeds distributed across the three Ps. Now, we have to play by general rules mandated by the enabling legislation. So the playbook says that all housing must be deed restricted, so deed restricted for 55 years under whatever level of affordability it was, it agreed to. All housing must be affordable for households up to 120% of area median income. So these bond proceeds can fund everything from very low, extremely low-income housing on up to moderate-income housing at 120% of AMI. Can be for rental ownership and interim housing. Production must provide projects that meet local extremely low, very low, and low-income RENA obligations, regional housing needs assessment obligations. The 28% flexible funds can be for housing and household-related uses, or housing-related uses, and we're going to talk about what that term means in a couple of slides. It's, the jury's out on whether general obligation bonds are going to be able to be applied to protections. And if we find out that we cannot use any of the bond proceeds for protections, BAFSA will recommend approval for recipients to allocate that funding to other programs. And then, programs must conform to an adopted expenditure plan. Next slide, please. As your first public speaker alluded to, the bond will be funded by a property tax based on current assessed property value. The actual cost of the taxed property owners is a function of interest rates applicable at the time of issuance and how fast funds are dispersed. But current projections show an estimated cost for a $10 billion bond at about $12 per 100,000 of assessed value. For example, about $120 per year for a property with an assessed value of $1 million for the $10 billion bond. Next slide, please. So now, we want to know what the bond can and will fund. As your city manager discussed at the beginning, the majority of the funds will be dedicated to production. 52% of the funds, at a minimum, need to be focused on production. These homes can be for, can be a wide range of styles, types, and sizes, built to fit appropriately into the surrounding neighborhood. Buildings could include duplexes or in-law units, accessory dwelling units, and even mid-size to large multifamily buildings. State law sets housing for low-income residents as the top priority for the bond, but it can also fund new homes for moderate-income residents, including affordable homeownership opportunities. The new housing will be homes for people, including seniors, people with disabilities, low-income and moderate-income households, and people experiencing homelessness potentially. Next slide. The next bucket is for preservation, and that's at a minimum 15% of the proceeds. These funds will be used to provide support to developers and community land trusts to purchase and rehabilitate existing apartments and preserve their affordability long term. Sometimes, the deed restrictions are due to expire, and the complex might be at risk for conversion from affordable to market rate. These proceeds could be used to preserve the affordability. The homes preserved would benefit low- to moderate-income households who are at risk of displacement. Next slide, please. 28% of the funds are set aside for, as flexible. Cities, counties, and BAFSA have flexibility to spend the remaining funds on their highest priorities established through a public process and in alignment with state law. Flexible funds can be prioritized for affordable housing production and preservation, as well as public infrastructure related to new affordable housing, such as making safety improvements to roads, creating and improving parks, and other community benefits. Down payment assistance programs for low- to moderate-income households are also on the table, and this would be an option for our local funds, the 80%, of the funds that return to source. Next slide, please. So throughout Sonoma County, there is a need for funding to support the projects we currently have in pre-development. We show 41 total projects that include about 2,200 homes. We have about 6,300 total affordable homes that are between 0 and 120% of the area median income included in our current RENA cycle. 162 of them are in Cloverdale. We also have almost 2,900 people experiencing homelessness in our county, 23 of whom live in Cloverdale. These individuals will likely need homes at the deepest affordability levels and may need permanent supportive housing, which requires additional operating and service dollars. Next slide. These program objectives are listed in the City of Cloverdale Housing Department website, and I just wanted to speak to the ability of this housing bond to help fulfill these objectives. This bond would provide rental opportunities for households earning between 0 and 120% of the area median income, and our local dollars are eligible to be used toward homeownership opportunities. This includes people experiencing homelessness, seniors, and working families. These homes can help stabilize families and keep people from having to move further away from job centers. This helps accomplish both supporting local economies and also reducing commute times, increasing homes near transit cores and town centers. And I can't help but mention that you've got a student liaison. I would imagine you would all like your local students to have places to live when they're ready to move out of their parents' homes, and hopefully, will have opportunities to buy homes in your own community here. Lastly, as I mentioned already, at least 15% of these funds will be used to preserve existing affordable housing, which helps retain the affordable housing we already have for future generations. Next slide. So now, we're going to talk about accountability and oversight. Counties and cities receiving bond funds must create local expenditure plans describing how funds will be used. These plans will be finalized no earlier than February 2025, after the election. Plans must be approved at a local public meeting with opportunity for public comment. That would happen following November 2024 if the bond is approved. They must comply with California Constitution and state laws. They must include consultation with all cities in the county, and that process is started. Counties and cities receiving bond funds will be required to submit annual reports on expenditures and progress toward goals. Next slide, please. Okay, now, we're pivoting back to the regional accountability. BAFSA must create a regional expenditure plan for the 20% of funds it will retain. The regional plan must be approved by the BAFSA Board and ABAG Executive Board prior to election at public meetings. Annual financial reporting will be required to the state. BAFSA is subject to regular independent audits, and once bond funds are spent, a citizen oversight committee will review expenditures and issue a report each year. Next slide, please. Here in Sonoma County, we're using a facilitator to guide us through the process of drafting an expenditure plan that will be required to submit in 2025, assuming the bond is approved. Our consultant, Forsyth Street Advisors, is also the consultant who designed BAFSA's own business plan, so we're really lucky to have them facilitating our process. We have four main goals as we navigate together through this process. We want to be fair. We want to be ready. If there are a lot of resources that hit the nine Bay Area counties all at once, the counties and the cities that are ready to go are going to be able to attract the interest of developers and contractors and all of the other sectors that we need to take housing off of paper and get it going vertical. We want to be thoughtful and data-informed, and we want to achieve the greatest impact with what is certainly a once-in-a-career opportunity for most of us that work on housing. Next slide, please. So we're still pretty early in the process. We had a kickoff meeting in March to start working, start work on our expenditure plan, and we've recently completed staff-level one-on-one meetings with each jurisdiction. And when I say "we," I mean our facilitators, not, I haven't been in those one-on-one meetings. Our consultant is currently analyzing pipeline data, sample allocations, and per-unit funding options. Next will be an analysis with each jurisdiction one-on-one, followed by final recommendations, and then, as noted earlier, the final expenditure plan will be due in the first quarter of 2025 at the earliest. Next slide, please. So what's next? This spring, the BAFSA Board and ABAG Executive Boards will make decisions and vote to approve the regional expenditure plan. They will also vote to place the bond on the ballot in all nine counties. The election is on November 6. If the measure passes, cities and counties receiving direct allocations of funds will hold local public meetings to approve their expenditure plans early in 2025. These meetings must be noticed and include opportunity for public comment. Next slide, please. In a homestretch here. Sorry, it's been kind of a long presentation. So we want to hear from you, both locally and regionally. At the regional level, everyone is welcome to attend BAFSA's monthly meetings. The meeting information can be found on the website, in this slide, or by Googling "MTC meetings." You can also sign up for the BAFSA mailing list and email BAFSA with any questions you or your constituents might have locally. The county is currently engaging with cities to, like I said, get going on drafting expenditure plans. These plans will be approved, like I said, at a meeting in early 2025. Next slide. Questions? Thank you for your attention, for inviting me to be here tonight.
Thank you, Michelle. It's a great presentation, and that wasn't too long. That was actually way better than some of them that we get. So let's go down around the table here. Who wants to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michelle, thank you for that presentation. I have a few questions. See, I'm only going to ask you a couple because I don't want my blood pressure to go through the roof.
I don't want that either.
So, you know, I guess my first question is, what amount is Cloverdale residents going to contribute to the pool in exchange for how much will we be getting back? So that's one question. I'd also like to know, how is the city going to be reimbursed for the time that our community development and city manager actually have to spend on the program? And then, as far as the homeless numbers in Cloverdale, you said, I think it was 120-some-odd, which I think might be a little high, but then again, we also have the county included in that 95425 ZIP code. You know, I'm sorry? Oh, 23, okay. You know, well, I've said enough, but I'd like to know how much Cloverdale is going to contribute and what you think we'd be getting back, dollar-wise.
Right. So the contribution is based on assessed value for a property owner's property. I am fortunate to have owned my home for a really long time. My assessed value is much lower than the market value for my home, so what I will contribute as a homeowner will be about, at the $10 billion level, about $120 per 100,000 of assessed value. I'm sorry, 120, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Rob. Thank you.
About $12 per 100,000 of assessed value. So if you've got a home that is assessed at $1 million, you'll pay $120. And also, that isn't what you're going to see on a property tax bill in the first year. As the tranches of funding come up, you'll see sort of a curve. That would be at the top of the curve. So that's the answer to what Cloverdale residents can expect. What you'll get back, we're working on the methodology now. We can look at factors like, objective factors like Cloverdale's percentage of the population, or Cloverdale's percentage of assessed value, or Cloverdale's regional housing needs assessment obligations, or maybe we combine a number of those factors and we weight different factors. We want to be fair, so we don't want, and actually, as I've talked with city councils, I have heard some say, "We want more than our share." Well, we can't all have more than our share, but I think we all want to be fair to one another, and so we'll hammer out a methodology that is fair and makes sense for everybody. And your, I'm sorry, the mayor did correct you on your homeless number. I believe the 100-and-some-odd number was related to your obligation under RENA for very low, low-income and extremely low-income housing numbers, something like that. I hope your blood pressure's okay.
That umbrella of homelessness encompasses a lot of things. To me, homeless is mom and dad who lost their home or can't keep up with the rent and got evicted, but also included under that umbrella are the drug-addicted and the mentally ill. And I'm not so sure that building homes for that, for those individuals, is the right thing to do, as opposed to giving them some social programs where they can improve their physical and mental conditions.
You raise a really good point about the senior unhoused population, because that's a head count we never even, that never even used to register, and now, on our point-in-time count, we're seeing a lot more seniors becoming unhoused, and that's a really sad statistic. And you're very smart to acknowledge that the unhoused population is a real range of stories. There's not really a stereotype.
Thank you, Michelle.
Councilmore, concern? Councilor Bagby?
Michelle, thanks for the great presentation. It was just the right size. You know, when we were getting the early presentations from APAG, or it was probably MTC, you know, we, SCTA board members brought up the issue of, and we were, I think we were really right in the middle of issues with mobile home parks and addressing some of the needs there with, you know, those are usually privately-held properties, but they're kind of the de facto affordable housing locations with small A, small H affordable housing, and realistically, affordable housing for seniors. So is that still a part of the discussion at this point of the conversation, is how, you know, cities and counties could use some of these funds to address the issues we're having with mobile home parks?
I know as our consultants are going around and talking with cities, there are a number of cities that have raised some interest in potentially using some of the proceeds to preserve what is called NOA, Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing. So we'll see if those cities want to make that a priority with these resources.
There's nothing, so that's, that sounds like that's kind of what that naturally-occurring bucket would be applied toward, but it would be a local decision.
It certainly could be applied to, for that use.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, for the presentation. I'm just looking at the regional and local accountability, and I guess I'm leery on accountability of so many funds in California. Prime example is homeless. Homeless has, when it, the amount of money that California has spent on homelessness, and there's absolutely no accountability. There's lots of money going places nobody knows, so I'm always leery when one of these new bonds comes up and I'm going to pay, and everybody regionally is going to pay more, like you said, not a lot, but they're going to pay more and pay more, and there's always a expenditure plan or something like that. There was with the homeless, too, and then it just kind of fell apart. So that's where I'm at, right here. I'm just not, I'm not convinced yet, you know what I mean, that the accountability is there, what we need.
Well, you'll be part of that conversation, and that is a cautionary tale. I mean, that is a great example of how not to do it. So I think we can learn some lessons from that. I was raised by a couple of parents that made a lot of wrong decisions, and I looked at them as a great example of how not to do things. So let's kind of view it through that lens, or we can view it through that lens.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Right, I have a couple of quick questions for you. Sorry. First one, is this going to require a two-thirds vote to pass? And if so, is it through all nine counties, or five counties?
So collectively, as it stands today, it would require a supermajority to pass. There is a constitutional amendment that Assemblymember Aggie R. Curry put forward that isn't final and still is being nibbled on, that may lower the threshold to 55% plus one for a general obligation bond that's targeted at affordable housing. That constitutional amendment, if it does make its way to the ballot, needs to pass by a simple majority. So that would certainly make the path more straightforward for the bond to pass, but that's all up in the air at the moment.
This one, with RENA numbers, Cloverdale's done a very good job of showing that we actually need more higher-end homes versus the affordable. How, do you think that's going to impact what we actually get out of this?
Yeah, I think you can say...
Like, I think it's at 162, or somewhere around there, the 100-and-some-odd homes, if that's all that we have the room for on our RENA, are they going to say, "Well, within your RENA, but, you know, I'm just going to make something up, say Hillsburg hasn't done anything," which I know they have, and I know it sounds bad, "but let's just say they didn't and they needed 1,000." Well, they get a lot more money than we do because they haven't done the work that we have.
Yeah. So I know that has been part of the content of conversations with the consultants that are talking with your staff, that Cloverdale feels like you're going to meet your extremely-low, very-low and low-income targets, and where you're going to have a more difficult time is at the upper end of the range. And so this is the time to share that input and shape our expenditure plan so that it addresses Cloverdale's very unique situation. It's a unique and fortunate situation.
You don't want to be punished for doing a good job.
No.
The next question I have for you, with, if this passes, would it spark a reassessment of people's homes?
No.
Okay, because that's something that I know the county has the right to do. So I would hate to have them have this pass and go, "Oh, we're going to reassess everyone's home in the county," and now all of a sudden your $400,000 assessed home is now at 800,000, and you're really paying.
Uh, no.
Okay. And the last question I have, and thank you for taking all these, I appreciate it.
Oh, my pleasure, I love it.
The last question I have, so when we're, a lot of the affordable housing, we don't get to choose who lives there until the end, where the grant funding is coming from, all the different ways that they get funded through the developer. With this, would we be able to say, you know, say we wanted 80% of it to be for seniors? Your list showed a lot of people. They showed preschool teachers, janitors, first responders. Would we be able to say, "We want the money to go towards these people versus," you know, and choose and pick and choose the direction it goes?
I think that would happen more in your participatory planning process, where if you're approving a complex, sometimes complexes are proposed and approved as seniors-only complexes. There are affirmatively furthering fair housing rules that we all have to live by, but...
Which is why I bring this up.
Yeah. I know there are projects that are specific to teachers, I know there are projects that are specific to seniors, so I don't anticipate a problem with that sort of...
So would this, would this go under the state housing rules that they have that...
Depends on the other money in the project. So if it's got low-income housing tax credits, there will be HUD requirements. If it's got state money, there will be some requirements associated with that. But generally, I think we all want to play by the fair housing rules.
Thank you. Anyone else before I open up, please?
I just want to thank you for your presentation, and I want to state for the record, I'm all for affordable housing, but how are we going to guarantee that it's livable affordable housing? Like, there's a new complex going in on Asti Road, and I checked it out, and it's like some of the apartments there are like three-bedroom, but they don't even have laundry facilities on each floor. They literally have to take their laundry out of the building, even in the rain, and go over to a central building to do their laundry, which a mother with children living in, you know, if they have three bedrooms, that's a lot of work. And I'm living in subsidized senior housing right now, where there's no soundproofing, there's no elevator, I'm on the second floor, I'm a senior, I have to drag my laundry into another building in the rain. And I just think, if we're going to build affordable housing and pass these kind of bonds, we really have to make it livable and comfortable and put soundproofing, and, you know, not just let developers slap anything together. So that's my point.
Yeah, and I think those issues are addressed through your participatory planning process. Your planning department has a robust participatory planning process where people get to come and talk about what is needed, what they think is needed in affordable housing projects. And hopefully, the people who need it most are also showing up and saying, you know, what it is they need. And you're a lived experience voice, and I really appreciate you raising that up.
Counsel? Okay, Michelle, I'm going to open up to the public and see if there's any questions, and if there are, maybe you can answer once we go through. Is there anyone?
Mayor, members of council, if I can, just add to the comments today. I think to your question, Mayor, about how the funds could be addressed to kind of the missing middle, that was a key point that both Kevin and I made to the consulting team that conducted kind of a fact-finding review of our housing numbers. We held that meeting this week, and we really did emphasize that the city council has done a very good job of meeting our RENA numbers, particularly in the very-low-income categories and low-income categories, in that, you know, from our perspective, where there's a tremendous need in Cloverdale is in regards to protection and preservation, and also that addressing the infrastructure costs that are so critical to be able to deliver these projects. So I just wanted to emphasize to council that staff really, I think, is in line with council and your perspective, and really made that point to the team that is developing the expenditure plan for Sonoma County, that in so much as our population, the production is largely going to be addressed by developers, and they're going to obtain financing, traditional financing, often through, you know, tax credits and other mechanisms. But there is a need to, you know, certainly protect existing affordable housing. We often get inquiries from Iole Ranch, for example. Those are often at risk to go to market, and if approved, this funding, that would be a key area where we could, you know, seek funding would be to preserve that housing as affordable, also to help us with some of the critical infrastructure costs. We know, we know how costly infrastructure is, and that would come under that flexible spending category. Last but not least, to Councilmember Walter's point about administration costs, I think the language thus far is intended to try to keep admin costs low and to use the majority of the funding towards, you know, actually, the, you know, protection, preservation, protection, with 5% going to admin. And we recognize, given our small staff, that it's, you know, it's going to be an additional responsibility for us to manage, you know, again, assuming it gets approved and manage the program, that, you know, to look at a cost allocation model with, with the Sonoma County Community Development Commission to help pay for some of the administrative costs. So, you know, we're, in our conversations, we're trying to reflect the perspective that we think, you know, we're experiencing here in Cloverdale with, you know, a fairly significant production of affordable housing with, with, you know, the Bumgarner Development, Asti Road, as well as the Badu Kali Project. And yet, there still is this need for preservation of existing affordable housing as well as protection, and that would be a key area where, if approved, we would be, you know, trying to set aside funding for those purposes. So, not to say that production, you know, wouldn't come up, it's just, you know, emphasizing, given our current RENA numbers and where we think we're going to land relative to production, that would be an area, be a real focus for us.
I have a follow-up, either for staff, and Michelle might want to chime in as well. First of all, I think, you know, we absolutely could do more to address easing the restrictions on the missing middle, because that's really what's going to help us, you know, build our property tax base and improve the structural deficit that we have in our budget. We need to do everything that we can on that. One of the things that does concern me about this bond measure is it's happening at the same time that so many developers are rallying to have fees waived. And my concern is that they'll point to this bond money and say, "Oh, well, you know, you can do the, you can pull your impact fees for, you know, police, roads, water, sewer infrastructure, you don't need it because you have the bond, so you can, you know, you can waive our fees." That just results to me in a gift of public funds, and that's one of the concerns that I have, is how this could possibly be used, is just to put more money in the pockets of developers who, you know, they already negotiate the impact fees down. So I was just wondering if staff has any thoughts on that, or if Michelle, you know, would want to address that concern.
Certainly, I think it's a very valid point, and we see proposed policy moving forward to request jurisdictions to address lowering the current impact fees. Certainly, as your city manager, I would advise against that approach. Impact fees are so critical to being able to address the cost of infrastructure necessary to serve development. It seems to me to be somewhat short-sighted to reduce those fees, and then you have the burden of delivering infrastructure, current infrastructure, that's so necessary to ensure that you have the capacity to serve that future development. It seems like it's, you're kind of kicking the can down the road. And when you look at pro formas, which we've had the opportunity to do, I think the impact fee component of that pro forma is typically a relatively small percentage, and that's kind of on our side of the pro forma, and we're being asked to give that up. You know, it should be, in my opinion, very limited circumstances where a council grants a, any kind of fee reductions or fee waivers. And again, just on the protection side, or supporting populations being able to move in, you know, kind of be able to move into an affordable unit, I think, you know, looking at first-time homebuyer assistance programs could be particularly beneficial, and down payment assistance, and that, again, was part of our feedback to the consulting team, look how that can be factored in to the expenditure plan to support, you know, actually, homeownership in Cloverdale. So that was, I just, again, for council's benefit, I want to emphasize that that was one of our key speaking points to the team that's preparing the expenditure plan for Sonoma County.
Thank you. I'll open up to the public now. Is there anyone that'd like to make a comment?
Sorry. So, Rob Kozlowski, I'm a resident here in Cloverdale, and I paid attention to your, I think David just said something about first-time homeownership and helping them, and that's to be a lot of programs for that. My daughter bought her first home here in Cloverdale, one-bedroom, one-bath condo, and she spent 20 years scrimping and saving to get enough for a down payment. So I would encourage that kind of thing to be looked at, to help young people trying to get into housing, because it builds confidence, they don't feel like they're a charitable thing as part of the state, as it were. So I think that's a great thing to help young people get housing. Michelle did a good job presenting, but I'm not sure where I would start on my questions. Maybe I'll just do a couple of comments with, with respect to Bafa's bond proposal. My joke is, I'm baffled. But it seems to me that there's so many new bond proposals coming out this fall from what I'm reading, that it's going to competing, going to be competing for voter approval. Plus, as I understand it, 20% of the bond funds in this $20 billion or $10 billion will be kept by Bafa, sort of a form of taxation on the bond proposals, how I look at it. So that was confusing to me, and maybe Michelle can clarify that. I also found that Bafa appears to be an overlay governing authority from, I thought it was Metropolitan Transportation Council back when, and it started dealing out with Bay Area traffic problems, and now it's proposing expanding its mandate to move residents into dense housing developments. And, you know, I had a nice email back from Bafa this morning, and they claim that they've got no ability to affect city and county building code requirements. And that's a bit concerning, because the comment made was, maybe if we do this bond, we can attract developers. However, one of the biggest challenges has been the onerous building codes that have been coming out since, actually, I built here in Cloverdale, bought a home, and that was on the 2016 building code, and that added about $83,000 in cost to the structure I bought, which is close to a quarter of a million dollars in selling price compared to where our home was in Santa Rosa before it burned down. So up to the 2016 building code, I tracked that there's $83,000 in additional costs. Since then, you've got solar panels and all kinds of stuff added, so the building codes have made it very expensive to build housing, whether it's multifamily, single residents, or what have you. So I think, as opposed to a bond measure, taxing residents more to fund additional housing, we could do a better job by using $20 billion to cut out some of these regulations, onerous building codes... onerous building codes, to make housing more affordable. So that's sort of where my head's at, that. And I guess last, it was mentioned about results. I'm concerned about how results get tracked. How do you verify that the money's being spent effectively? And I guess I'll close with the old saying, it was a basketball coach, John Wooden, said, never mistake activity for achievement. So there's going to be lots of activity, lots of bonds, either accepted, rejected, but the ones that are approved, I'd like to see true accountability and reporting about what the success is in getting people into housing that need it and can afford to keep the housing in good shape. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Michelle, do you want to make any closing comments or anything, or it's up to you.
Really appreciate your time and attention to housing in general. Appreciate your public commenter. I've got a lingering cough that just started to revisit me, so I'll leave it at that, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Great. Well, thank you so much, Michelle. It was really good to see you again. All right, we'll move forward into the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone want to pull any items? Seeing none, anyone in the public want to pull any items on the consent calendar? Seeing none?
Move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagby? Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0, thank you. Moving into I New Business, I-1 General Fund Water and Wastewater Reserves Balances as of June 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Included in your packet is a general report that provides an overview of how our finance department transferred the general fund surplus affecting the reserve balances as of June 30th, 2023. Just by reference, council did accept recently an audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th. The independent audit report identified a surplus at the end of the fiscal year of $42,000. Based on our reserve policy and following the criteria provided in that policy, that $42,000 was allocated to your emergency reserve fund as well as your contingency reserve fund. Let's see, for the emergency reserve of the $42,000, $12,600 was transferred to emergency reserves, which increased the balance to a total of $700,705. And likewise, contingency reserve, $29,400 was transferred to the contingency reserve, which brought that balance up to $1,697,836. So in total, amongst those two reserves, you've got $2,398,541 in those respective Given the relatively small amount of the surplus, no additional reserves were transferred to the four remaining reserve accounts, equipment replacement, police vehicle, facility replacement, or compensated absences. So really, the action tonight is just to accept the report and acknowledge that those transfers were made by your finance team to those reserve accounts.
Thank you, David. Questions or comments by the council? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? All right. Thank you. David will accept that. I appreciate it. Moving into subcommittee reports, does anyone have anything to report from their subcommittees? Seeing none, all, did you say once? Yeah, once, I guess. Subcommittee agendas, approvals, and media are all available on our website, www.cloverdale.net/agendacenter. Any councilmember reports? Fire Expo, May 19th, it's a good thing. That's before our next meeting, so I think everyone should go and learn about the resiliency. Next, no support of that. City manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real brief report. Tomorrow, the, both myself or community development director and council member Morganstern will be attending an open house that's hosted by the Reach for Home at the L&amp;M located in Heelsburg. So there's going to be a tour and a lunch. Members of our homeless subcommittee were invited to attend. I know Vice Mayor Wheeler also has an airboard meeting that will make it a little more challenging, but excited to get a tour. And that's the end of report, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney?
Yeah, Mayor, just one thing I, excuse me, want to add based on that last conversation and reference councilmember Bagby made to impact fees, is that, you know, every year we see in legislature attempts to limit what cities can charge for their impact fees, and, you know, they're there again this year, and CalCities has done a pretty good job of fighting it. But like so many of these housing laws that come out, I think the legislature's intent comes from this really bad actor. So I just pulled up our fees to check, and our park fee is like $5,000 a unit, and you go to Menlo Park or someplace, easily 10 times that amount, if not more. And they really are just adopted to be obstacles to housing in those places. And so, you know, as you talk with your, you know, local legislators, really emphasizing that point of showing them how low ours are, but still critical compared to some of these other places, and that they should be using, you know, not a hammer, but a, you know, whatever that thing is, a paring knife.
All right. Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, speaking of CalCities, I was able to attend one of the breakouts a couple of weeks ago, and it was Solano County kind of presenting their, they've actually created a, and it came up tonight, they created a JPA to address homelessness, and it was for the specific, to address the specific problem that I think we've all seen is the lack of accountability, I mean, and literally like the lack of accounting, and then the lack of accountability. So the workshop really emphasized us to keep an eye on AB 129, the budget trailer bill regarding, and what, they were supervisors and councilmembers from Solano County on the panel, and they said, I think what you're going to see going forward, especially with where AB 129 is concerned, is that regions who want to get money from the state are going to have to form a JPA, because there's going to have to be reporting accountability back to how the money is being spent. So I was wondering if you could kind of keep an eye on that and how that's being implemented. And then the other piece was, does your firm plan to give us late breaking news on when the Supreme Court issues its decision regarding the Taxpayer Deception Act, which I think it's heard by the Supreme Court this morning?
We will certainly update the council when that decision comes out. The, in California, they, the court probably already knows what its decision is going to be.
Well, they're not going to tell us for a while.
They have, they have to issue their decision, I think it's within 60 days, maybe 90 days of the hearing that was today, and so we'll have that soon, and we'll certainly update that.
Yeah, and the reason I really want to get an update on that is that, you know, we're going to have to make a decision on how we're going to move forward on the November ballot, and that, I think it's going to have a little bit of an impact as to how we might want to proceed. So if we could get that information ASAP, we might even want to call a special meeting to discuss what we would then do on the ballot, and that would be up to the city manager and the mayor if they feel that that is necessary, just depending on when we get the information. So a timely update would be appreciated.
Any direction on future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I have two things I'd like to see us either address at the city council level or at a subcommittee. One of them is a non-usage fee of some of our commercial buildings in the downtown. Specifically, I'm referring to the Canton Restaurant, the old Cloverdale Bank. Now there's a new one over at the Druids. I think councilmember Bagby brought this up a few years ago about looking into the possibilities of enacting some type of a fee. So I'd like to see that discussed at the committee somewhere, with council's permission. And then secondly, again, councilmember Bagby, I hate to keep using her name, but at the last meeting we had, when I expressed my concerns about the car wash, she mentioned something about receivership of a property as opposed to eminent domain. So I don't know if Alex could have a little closed session with us on the difference between them, how we move forward, if we decide to move forward with the car wash. So those are two things I'd like to get council approval to have as future agenda items.
So with the first one, would you want that on a subcommittee, or looking ahead?
I've been advocating for that for years. I'm happy to see some council support for that. So I'm happy to send that to the subcommittee.
What was that?
Been advocating for that for years, so I'd be happy to see both of those. Actually, so I've brought up the idea of, you know, fines for empty buildings that are, you know, obviously not just empty, you know, incidentally, but that are, have just really become attractive nuisances in the community. I've kind of been bringing that up for years. And then I've also, you know, discussed the idea of conservatorship and attended yet another workshop on that subject at the latest CalCities meeting, and I think just a primer on that from our attorney who specializes in real estate, is probably right up your alley. I think that would be advantageous, just so that we're all sort of using the same vocabulary and discussing it in the same language, and we really sort of understand how it can be, you know, a part of our enforcement role that we have in the city. It's just one tool, but it's definitely, you know, time for us to revisit.
Do we want them both at a subcommittee, or one of each?
I think we can leave that up to staff.
What does, yeah, what does staff feel like we need to do?
I think the issue, the first item requesting, I'd call vacancy ordinance, it really involves a fee that maybe finance, admin, and police, I mean, there's spillover to planning and sustainability, and maybe we can consult with the city attorney on how best to address both subcommittees. But I think developing that policy would come to subcommittee first, and then relative to the second request, I do think it's important to get kind of a legal overview and what's involved relative to eminent domain and receivership, and if we're going to talk about a specific property that, under real property negotiations, might be a closed session item.
Perfect.
And actually, I really think that we need to have an open session about it, just make it an open session educational, because, you know, while we certainly have properties in mind that we have and issues of, it's really about developing a holistic policy and making, you know, adding tools to our toolbox. So, you know, perhaps something that's just more educational initially, and then if we, you know, have ideas about properties where we need to take action, that's really where I would prefer to see them in closed session. The city attorney could comment on that.
We could do, you know, if it's the council's direction, you know, if it's just a general discussion, that's something that is appropriate for open session. If we want to get into the details of specific properties and whether we might desire to, really whether it would be initiate litigation relative to those properties, that would be appropriate for closed session.
Because I think inversely, too, once you become more conversant with the tools at hand, you might be, if you were in a closed session, you would verge off of the discussion of the single property, and then you would also be in violation of meeting rules. So if we have just more of a basic primer on, you know, the possible tools we could add to our toolbox, and then we could maybe move forward with specific properties as it arises.
I still hope that we can have a discussion on zoning for mobile home parks, but I hope it's legal to say that maybe we could pick a month where people are not going to be on vacation so that we're all present for the discussion.
Yep, we'll put that on the agenda for probably August-ish, probably a good time for that one. Great. Anything else? Seeing none? All right, meeting adjourned at 7:27. Thank you all for being here.